The school boards fought very hard to maintain that right to be the approval board. Then got overrode with this other board.
There's a later hierarchy.
But when John Bush was governor, he wanted all the charter schools to be under this other board and surpass the school board approvals. So we fought very hard to keep the approval process even though we lost a part of it in this appeals process. But the burden that is caused on school districts is almost unimaginable.
We are a high-performing school district with, you know, as a school district with multiple As into our seventh year as an A district. And we would then are in a position to say that we would approve a school system or an entity to our students that is less than what we are today? Absolutely not. And I certainly hope that our, that if they get overturned, or if they get, then shame on, shame on these commissioners for doing such a thing. Because we are an example of what they are aspiring to be. Why would we want to have less?
And we agree. And that's, I think, Mr. Candy, why great work and time. And you talk about hundreds of hours, business hours, why that was placed, put forth with a desire to help, of answering the question, how do we best serve and support the students of Citrus County? So at this point, it is your decision and your recommendation to move ahead either. And again, I'm not sure the language, Mr. Bradshaw. The committee, the committee is recommending, however, you as a board make your recommendation.
Well, why couldn't we make a motion that we would approve the recommendation of the charter school committee of Citrus County?
You might need to clarify what that recommendation is.
I think you need to actually deny the application.
Correct.
Okay, then I move that we deny the application for MCI charter schools.
Seven.
Citrus County.
M, change the name, now MCCA.
MCCA charter schools.
Or M, I'm sorry, MCCA charter schools.
But not for me.
To deny the charter, no, deny the application of MCCA charter schools. Is that full enough?
Yes.
Okay. Ready to vote? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fuzz, carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. And thank you for the entire team for their efforts.
Well, and our apologies that you have to sit all weekend and fill out this form.
Mr. Bradshaw, and again, you're welcome to join, Mr. Kim. I think, Mr. Bradshaw, this is not the end of this. It's our, one way or another, we don't believe that this is the end.
Oh, we'll be back.
And you know, what frightened, what frightened me a bit was when Mr. Blocker said, he said, you don't have to treat, they don't have to treat the teachers the way we have to treat the teachers. I think, well, what about the students? Are there any rules for treating the students? And maybe not. The way they want to.
Well, I-
I'm sure they still have to meet all the educational needs. They just do, basically, in the state of Florida, but they're a private corporation. They can pay, they can offer a benefit, they can issue, they're not in the state retirement system, they're just a separate corporation.
I actually spoke to someone whose grandchildren go to a charter school in Hillsborough County. And what she told me was, they have a very strict discipline code. And if you violate it one time, you are out. So there's a lot of rules and things that they can do that we can't do. And, and, you know, I listened to Diane Rabbit yesterday on the radio, and she was talking about charter schools notorious for leaving out students who are low performing on tests and every other kind of thing. And that their, so their performance looks better because they don't, they have a much lower percentage of minority students, much lower percentage of ELL students, and the low performing students on tests are not, and that's what charter schools were supposed to serve. That was how they, why they were created.
And we would treat the student by trying to help them improve of all of this.
Remember, our doors are open at any time.
Remember the blueberries?
The blueberries. Okay, legal matters? None? Report, I'll give you something?
No matter.
Mr. Murray?
Two things. Because I'm going to be gone, the first part of my personal things, personal matters, and the second part, I'm not going to school approval plans. So if anybody would like to pick those up, I'd be happy for you to volunteer to do that.
Okay, to share them among us for this?
Well, they're there.
I've already taken the rock pressure one on Monday.
And I've taken the citrus high school one on Friday.
Okay, and do you have one that, another one?
There's two others.
I got an email today that they-
Would you let, yes, we have it. Would you just, all you need to do is just tell Mrs. Salmon, email Mrs. Salmon that you, which ones you're doing so that the schools, you did that. I know most of you have done that already, but if there are any missing pieces yet.
Okay, well, I'll check. I'll take one, one of the others.
Thank you.
One other thing. It's been a pleasure to serve this board and previous boards in the last eight years. Let's take a minute to review some of the highlights of the last eight years. First of all, on the academic side, we began with ninth grade academies. We continued with the Abbott and the IB programs that we heard about today. And that's major accomplishments. On the non-academic side, we have the Health Center. We saved a million dollars. Did concreables and saved three, three and a half million dollars on 23 classrooms. Christopher High School, we saved approximately 30 million, 32 million dollars in interest over life of that loan. Christopher Primary, we decided to renovate that school and save another 12 and a half million remodeling instead of building a new elementary school. We have new cafeterias at two of our high schools with food courts, and they're being done very successfully. And our participation in those are up. And we'll be finishing that second one shortly. And with caution board, because I think somebody on the east side will come knock on your door here shortly, and think maybe that's such a good idea. We ought to have one in Citrus High School. Also, we remodeled bus compounds. We forgot that. And we put in new above ground tanks so that we could move those at some point if we had to, and wash centers. And commend this board and previous board in keeping three of those centers and not going to one. Because there was a discussion about that before the eight years. And I think when they kind of decided to do that, I don't think they were that successful. But anyway, we'll leave it there. I will be at the next board meeting on November the 13th. Because I'm taking some vacation time in October on some personal matters. And at the middle of the month, I'm having some personal health issues that will be taken care of. And you know, most of you know that. It's been a great 28-year run in Citrus County. Very fulfilling, especially the last eight years. Depending on state funding, the next two years could be very challenging for the board. But I have confidence in this board to meet that challenge and will do the right thing by the children of this committee. Respectfully submitted. Bill Murray.
Well, thank you, Mr. Murray. I want to say, it's been an incredible pleasure working with you. You've always been to the point. You always get to the, to the issue. And no bidding around the bush, saying what you believe. And you always research in the building of schools and stuff. You have so much knowledge, so much information in your head about construction and how to save a dollar here and dollar there. And you can see how it was done just by, by the money that we did save. And you're my partner driving down the FSBA. I don't know if I'll ever get, we get there again because you're the one who buys and drives there. So it's been an incredible pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. Candy?
I did so much to follow that. Mr. Murray, you know, I've shared it before, how important you are, and I know there'll be another opportunity, but I thank you for all the wisdom that you continue to try and instill in me. And I plan on us going to lunch, by the way, when, when afterwards to pick your brains some more. So following in Mr. Murray's footsteps, I, I did something he's, he encouraged me to do this week, or this past week, and went with Mr. Sutton over to Crystal River High to look at those, some of those, that great work.
I heard you were there.
I, I just have to commend this board again. That is a state-of-the-art facility that is just a campus of academic excellence. It is just, it is so exciting. The media center is, oh, that's right, you did hear, because your brother, I just never thought, your brother took me wrong.
What about you?
It is exquisite what learning is going to be happening in those walls and in that business center, in that media center. The cafeteria is going to be, I believe, this week, if it's not been opened yet, it's pretty much there. It looks like a little fast food setup going in on there. And that is going to be so great for those students. So I again commend this board, Ms. Himmel, the staff in, in putting that project together. Because it just gets you excited to want to be a student again and just participate in what's happening there. As long as I can take what I know now. A couple of things. I had the calendar committee, and they're going to be bringing the calendars forward. But one of the things we talked about, we did establish, I think with all of them, a 30-day, I'm sorry, 30 hours' worth of professional development, which was to again meet some of those criterias. And I was again impressed with, Mr. Simon, I must give you such kudos to facilitate all those different minds, all of that collaboration. You did just a fabulous job. And I really think while the beginning and ending dates did not change much on all of the calendars, the meat inside, I think, is to give some options. And particularly at the, in the development days, professional development days. So I passed that along. The question I had, and Mr. Blocker, maybe you know the answer of someone else's, Skyward, the parent access piece. I know that that was talked about coming online in January. Is that still?
That is currently the goal, to bring the schools online in January. We do have two schools that have expressed kind of doing a pilot prior to that.
That was going to be my question of if we could maybe do that.
Actually, I have scheduled some time to meet with Steve, Mr. Chamberlain, to go over all that and make sure we're still on target for rolling all that access out.
That would be great.
One middle school, one high school have expressed interest in trying to pilot it prior to the end of the year to get it going.
That would be fabulous. Because I definitely am hearing from staff how they would, it would benefit them. And I think if we tested it at some levels, but I've encouraged that we're still looking at January. I know that scares some and excites others, but I still think it's, it's the right move. So that, and I'm just looking here to, 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 the only thing that I wanted to throw out to the board is, are we doing or have we planned anything more on the .25 mileage rate discussion? I know, Mr. Blocker, on Thursday, you're going to be meeting with the educational, or having that educational forums tonight?
Correct, it's at the First Presbyterian Church.
So I know that, that's something you're going to be talking about.
Spoke to an individual, and inadvertently, I believe, Patrick is not going in person tonight to speak to another group, the same group who I spoke to on the phone to talk to about the same issues.
But as a board, you know, that's something-
We talked about it, and not as far as I know, but I'll commit to speaking to some groups the next, like, three Saturdays, so.
I know today, there was a group that had asked me to go. I couldn't because obviously we were here. But I did provide them some detailed information. And I don't know if maybe you could pass along some of your, you know, talking points to us, you know, maybe of whatever you're going to, after you've shared it on Thursday, maybe you could share that out to us and we can use in our presentations as well. Again, so that we're kind of all speaking the same figures and-
I can see we're focusing in on remediation and acceleration. Those are two areas that certainly have been mandated legislatively without the funding. So that's certainly two of the areas we're focusing on, discussing with the groups.
Would you send some talking for us to, to all of us, so that we can be on the same page?
That, you know, and that, you've done so well, that kind of synopsis of the history of it. We've gone from here, we've gone from here. That would be helpful.
Exactly, because the question, why don't you submit it to somebody else?
That's exactly it. That's exactly it. And I think for me right now, that I'm just going to end there.
Okay. So Bill, here's, I'll, I'll say to you what I say to myself. Very often, when I walk up to a school, I see a plate on the front door with my name on it. And a lot of times, it takes me by surprise because I forget, you know, how long I've been around. But there's a, there's a legacy. There's a fingerprint that you leave forever on the school system. And you've been a big part of that. And you're going to, you're going to understand that. In a couple of years, you're going to go to a school and you go, oh, there's my name. There's my name.
I would have checked all that out.
I know, but it's, it's an interesting feeling. And you'll be most proud when you go to Christopher High School and you see the name there. And you'll be part of that process, and it will be on that plate. So those are kinds of things that, those legacies that you leave behind are for other people to see and remember your name for a really long time. And remember all your contributions. Because the whole face of this district has changed in the years. Very. And that was a great campaign speech. We're going to have our district advisory council training on October 30th, and you all are invited. The nature of this one's going to be a little different than in the past because advisory councils, their roles really have changed since we have become so much more technical and our accountability level is, needs so much detail that school advisory councils are really no longer the driving force of school approval plans like originally they had been designed to be. And so that's part of what we're going to talk about with the group is going, reviewing, of course, the rules of the road because nobody remembers them.
That's right.
And then, and then, and then really having some discussions about how can the advisory council best serve the school community, you know, in its changing role? What kind of topics are people discussing at their meetings? We hear good things about some, some are others, you know. And how do you, and how can you reach out to more interested people and share what you're doing? Because advisory councils don't necessarily need to be reserved as that small group of people who have been elected to deal with national issues. Like, I was at IPS the other day, and they had, Arnie, Arnie Olson was there to talk about the Marine Science Academy. Is Ernest Olson there?
It is.
It was, he had, he had slides and pictures, and you know, there was like four parents there. And I thought, gee, that, you know, if they had had that on that marquee, come here about marine science, I bet you they would have had a better turnout. You know, it's a shame to have great expertise and presentations and just keep it to a few people. So those are going to be some of the conversations that we hope will come out with some good suggestions.
What's the timeframe on that?
It's, I think, what do we say?
Six o'clock?
Six to seven thirty or something like that.
And where is it moving?
It's going to be out at the IRC. Do you have any other suggestions of what we, what else we might use for that, for that time to help kind of spur the next level of advisory councils? You know, kind of move them up to wider net?
I mean, they always ask about information from the board of what, you know, what we're doing. And then also, we ask what they need. What, what do they need to tell us that we, they feel we need to work on?
Sure.
So I think that needs, that interchange needs to be emphasized.
One of the things that I've always thought is, you know, one of their roles, and I think it's still based in statute, and somebody correct me, please, is the surveys. And we don't, we've never, we haven't, you know, had consistency sometimes, and, you know, each school does them a little differently. But we as a district, I mean, to me, that always seemed like a huge tool for us to know what your survey said, for the boards to get those surveys. Also, maybe for us to inject information that we want as a district to get feedback. I'll tell you, Citrus Springs Elementary, I think they got like 80-something percent response, I mean, that they got of their students, of the parents responding to the survey, just because they had like a little contest. And so they really got some very good data as to what is going on and what things they need to improve and, and address at their school. But I've always thought, man, we could ask the, you know, as a board, we could ask questions to the, to parents and really get some maybe good feedback of our programs or what, do they know about programs? Maybe we need to make them more aware of. So that's it. And, you know, the school universities that they're doing, that would be a great tie-in.
That's Mike's doing that. Well, everybody has a different name. Some people call them curriculum nights, some people call them parent university.
They, some of them started parent universities last year or so. We're pigging back on those.
Right.
And Mark just texted me, it was six o'clock at the SEC.
Right.
He's on his way to curriculum.
Okay. So, so we're inviting the principals, the advisory council chairs, and of the advisory council's chair, we've looked at the list, I would say about half of them are, are school employees. So we're asking them that if they would also invite a parent representative, because it's really about growing participation by involving parents. That was the whole point of advisory councils, to be human.
I talked about Helen from the Cantor Villa, didn't I?
Um, somewhat, yeah.
She runs a tight, hopefully she'll be there and she'll share with us what she does. Would you please ask them to be sure what their, the name of the school, that they're sending a message to us from? Because most of us read the names.
Right, you are so right. I get messages and I say, I don't have any clue what this is.
I have to remember who it was from.
Okay, we need to give the list of reminders. Okay. Any emails, right? Any email agendas? Okay.
Kansas City, are we from?
Yeah. Okay, then just one quick thing. You know, I'm, I'm participating on this FSBA task force to look into testing. And so the governor met with the executive team from FSBA, and he said, well, tell me five things, easy things that I can do now that will help with this whole problem of testing. So Joy Cato has instructed us to send her five things that she called low-hanging fruit. So I'm really struggling with that because first of all, how dare the governor decide he's going to tell us? He just wants us to tell him easy things to do because they're all hard. Everything that we've done has been hard.
Now, I'm not, when he met with us-
He's asking you guys something different.
When he met with us, he told us that it's easy to get a few things done every year. That he felt like there was a lot of things that needed to be fixed. He didn't, now, he didn't say to us, easy.
Well, I think they've misinterpreted it. But I think he said exactly that.
Right, he said, I can get something, I get one thing done.
It's easier to get a few things done.
If we come up with a list, we get one thing done.
But what they want-
I think they made easy.
Well, they're not, well, all right, okay. Here's my dilemma. You know, our dilemma is that we have a committee of 27 people, of which about three of them really understand what the issue is. The rest of them are just kind of like, yeah, yeah, we'll just do something else besides FCAT. Yeah, that's, that's it.
That's the ticket.
That's the ticket. So, so, so here's my, my suggestion so far is, is to choose, or to ensure that we have a commission of education that is supportive of public education, which is the 2.6 million people that they represent instead of the few charter schools. That the governor should- Right, the governor should create his own fact, backfinding task force of just teachers, parents, students, school board members and superintendents, legislators and charter school members. To try to drill down, what exactly is the problem? You know, forget the solution.
You mean talking about using stakeholders?
We haven't even defined what the problem is. We all have no idea what the problem is. That we should have a moratorium on rolling in any more of these end-of-course exams. We should have a multi-track, and these are, companies are legislators. So I, I'm trying to think, is there something else that he, as a governor, can do? He cannot undo past legislation. He doesn't have that ability. He can only veto bad legislation. But he can't undo what's been done. He can certainly say he wants it. You know, things like making end-of-course exams count no more than 30% and have, you know, what else? What are some things that the governor can do that do not require legislation that would help the situation that we're facing in the, in the next school year?
You should have asked me that at nine o'clock this morning.
Okay, well, tell you what, we're supposed to send our answers in by Friday, so send it to me by tomorrow. Email it to me sometime.
Many times you've said that, you and Thomas, always have said that today, that you need to have a vision of where you want to go. You need to have a vision of the end.
Okay.
And then you back back and ask yourself how to get there.
And here's something that's easy. He needs to not approve any legislation that puts a mandate on us July 1st. It has to be 12 months.
Without probably two-year implementation time or, or that comes without funding. He needs to veto those.
Because that's what happens to all districts. They approve something in May, and then by July 1st, it's going to be, at least give us a full school year to get ready.
Right.
Tell me, tell me what you said again. Your, your thing with governor, what'd you say? I gotta write it down.
He, he wants to know what are some of the things that he, that will be, he could accomplish. It's easy to accomplish a couple of things at a time that will help alleviate some of the problems that are being caused by, and I'm not sure what the next part of the sentence is, whether it's the testing, whether it's the accountability, you know, what is, what does he say? What are his words? Do you remember?
He was telling us that, you know, he's been meeting with parents and teachers only. Nobody else is allowed. Press is allowed, school board members, superintendents. He was, he said he was amazed when he brought out how many mandates or 16 and 17.
How could he not know this? You're talking about someone who doesn't have a clue.
So, okay. I think we're out of luck. But he did ask for suggestions so that he could get a few things done a year. He said you can't get a huge list done, but you can get a few things done.
And you said he met many of parents and teachers. How about students? They're the ones, the recipients, follow this.
Well, I, I think-
Want to veto unfunded mandates?
That's what we're saying. We have, we have that on the list. But FSBA is saying to me in this conference call, well, we can't talk about the sanctions for testing because, because they know how the appearances of being against accountability, and we don't want to have that perception. And I'm sorry, I'm blown in.
We are in favor of testing. We are opposed to a test determining if a third grader can pass.
Then why have the test?
That's a, because to, to figure out how the child has moved from September to May. That's a fine test. Just one test. And it doesn't determine whether you graduate from high school.
Well, those, see, those are the sanctions, and they want us to stay away from them, which I think is absolutely wrong response. And I, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't like this now, because I really must have been very depressed when I got done listening to the level of lack of, of real depth of understanding of what the, what the issues are going forward and-
We used to give us Iowa test of basic skills. We gave it every May.
Right. Somebody just mentioned that some other pre-med school, oh, we do CTBS. Really? Good old CTBS. Where, where was that anymore? The problem that I foresee for both the superintendents and the FSBA School Board Association is we're going to get one bite at this apple. You know, he's only going to invite us to the table once. So your stuff better be good. Because if you come, they're kind of wishy-washy, you think, well, you know, just like we don't like FCAT, so just go and do something else.
You have to answer.
We will be done.
We don't like FCAT because of what they've done to it.
What you're saying when you were talking about IB and what it was based on, I think is the answer to all of that. What is education about? How do you get there? How do you do it right? But go back to the IB plan, they'll say, well, it's all the IB, because that's not correct. But the principles upon which IB is established, that is right.
Right.
That is education.
Well, and even the testing of it is using multiple indicators. It wasn't using one indicator or one type of style. It was multiple-
The CTBS was just one test.
It's going to tell you when you take it, what you learn and what you need to learn instead of how well you can check a box, because that's something the other tells you. I would make sure you, you recall some changes.
Can you call them? I was at elementary school the other day, and the dad who was sitting there so quietly all of a sudden piped up, and he said, when we were talking about the testing, and he said, and he had a fourth grader, he said, oh my God, he said, I can't even explain to you the stress in my house during the FCAT. He says, and she's a good student. Said, I know, you know, and you can't, you can't tell them, calm down, don't worry about it, because they're, they are. And then I spoke-
And our teachers are telling them that, too. It's not like they're saying stressed out over it.
I spoke this, I spoke this morning to Rick Roach in Orange County, and he went and he went yesterday to talk to an algebra class that had Teacher of the Year was a teacher. He went with assistant superintendent and somebody else. They wanted to talk to the kids in algebra who had failed the Algebra I and the course exam. These kids had failed it twice. And they were, they had all passed their class lecture with As and Bs. So he said to the teacher, what can you do differently? He said, the teacher said, I have no idea. He said, those kids, and the kids have notebooks? He said, show me your notebook, can you tell me, explain to me? And these problems, kids were all over it. But they said the test had words in there they hadn't seen before. They had a lot of extra texts that was just kind of like smoke screening and where they couldn't even figure out which, what the problem needle was. And we don't learn on a computer, but the test is on a computer. So the kids had a lot of insight as to what was wrong with it, but there's no diagnostics. You could have missed, you could have missed it, missed assignment by one question, right? And we don't, we'll never really tell that student what was it that he missed? Was it polynomials? Was it factoring? Was it exponentials? What was a part of the algebra curriculum that they didn't do well? So what good is a test if you can't even figure out what it is you didn't learn? You need to go back and study. So.
So you need it by Friday?
I think they want it by the 27th, what's today, the 25th, yeah. So, Friday, Thursday, Thursday, okay. Yeah, that would be good. So I, and I would hope this numbers of FSBA, that you all will, will, will join me in being vocal about sending a very strong message with no fear about talking about the ramifications for testing because that is what the problem is. When we take kids and we're failing them and they're not graduating, you know, that's where we have, I even think it's a moral wrong to do to these kids.
Do you mean when we're communicating with FSBA? I'm just not really sure that I.
Yes, with FSBA, because their leadership is telling them, you know, basically you gotta, you know, back off on that and go soft and, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to irritate the legislators or the leadership in the house.
No, that's their report. You have to back off if you don't have a plan, if you don't understand. But if you have a plan and you understand, then you go forward.
Well, you know what? And we don't even have, I mean, it's not up to us to redesign the accountability system. It's up to us to, to, to report what the impact of that accountability system has on our kids. We have students in our district, everybody has students in their district. That's where we differ from the legislators, is that we understand, they're our kids.
They're our grandparents.
You know, it reminds me very much about, my daughter did dressage for many, many years and you have a horse and beautiful movements, very finite movements, very small movements. But as she went out to a dressage ring with her horses, someone let her horse off and gave her a camel, she could not win a dressage tournament because it's totally different. And that's what happens with a lot of testing. You're, you train for dressage, you can do it well and someone gives you a camel to ride, it's over. Doesn't test what you've learned.
Yeah. So anyway, okay, so anything you can send me, please? And then you got, who's going to the legislative committee? You're going down there, okay, so have we, what is that, in October?
I'm going to have to get back to you. I'll go down and all of us go down, but I'm not sure on that one.
Well, the legislative committee is going to review the FSBA platform. They, you know, they haven't even sent out an invitation yet, but you just got to notice it by the end of the day.
I'll get back to you on that.
I'm going to be out of town, so Ginger, it could be up to you. I think you're the alternate, right?
I am. Alternative.
I am the alternative.
You're the alternative assessment.
Let me know when. Okay. That's it.
Mr. Murray, you don't going to miss it. But I'm not really going to miss you because I know where you live.
We all do.
You had to take my car there.
I did have to take your car there.
No mistake, wasn't it?
Well, I did take him to your house prior to that. That's why they have a problem.
With your husband.
Finding. With Nick.
Don't want any conversation.
Nothing's anything wrong.
Nothing.
Uh, my word. All right, other thing.
Other thing, sorry.
I'm going to visit in a week, I'll come back to visit and stuff.
Want to mention the student art exhibition is, this is coming Thursday here at the District Service Center, 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM.
Wait, 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 wait.
Say it again.
What?
4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, September the 27th.
Wait a second, September?
That's two days, Thursday.
That's two days, now, oh, what time?
And 4:30 to 6:30, and it's here, the District Service Center.
Right. There's a lot of stuff going on the 27th.
I know, and you have something that evening.
I'm going on a cruise, I'm dying to be here.
Oh, you're leaving, is that, are you leaving that today?
I'm leaving, Thursday afternoon.
Oh. Let someone call my plane and tell them that all that.
I'm on a cruise, it's a drive.
Okay, forgot about the plane. And, oh, we have Veterans Day coming up on the 11th.
What? Veterans Day is on Sunday.
Oh, yeah, it's on Saturday.
On Saturday.
Right.
I'm guessing.
Or Monday.
I was thinking it's Monday.
I thought the Monday. I don't know.
Because she was in the.
Hey, where's, what's your.
Wait, Mike, Mike Wright knows.
Oh, I don't have it.
Do you know what a parade is?
Oh, that one, it's on there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Parade, Veterans Parade, it's on Veterans Day.
On Sunday?
I don't know.
Here we go. It's all Veterans Day Parade, Saturday, November the 10th.
Oh, thanks.
Dating at Chris Turner High School parking area, beginning at 8:30.
What did you, Christopher River?
Yeah, what do you mean?
Centrus, I'm sorry.
CHS.
That's Murray Horace birthday too.
All right. Yes.
And are we all going to be in the parade as usual?
Yes, we are, aren't we, Sam?
Ms. Hamel, are you going to have a bus or something for, a bus or something?
That's what I thought you said, yes.
California.
Yes, we'll have a bus. Thank you for finding us.
Not a problem.
If you're watching, then let's see what else. We want what our kids want to be in.
Yeah, they're good, they're good little horses.
Yeah, they are, they're great sports.
And October the 4th, Junior Achievement is having a breakfast. You're supposed to be, get an invitation on that. It's going to be at 7:30, it's out at Citrus Hills.
I'm going to be at Crescent at eight.
Send you the exact.
Toural City at eight.
Reading on that, if anyone can come.
I'll be there, represent all of it, come here.
That's a very busy week that we, the advisory council, we're all at eight o'clock.
Oh, that's that week.
Yeah, that's that week. I'm going to be happy that week. I was hoping to find a picture in the mail because I couldn't call on Monday, so.
Have that services give you a wake-up call?
I'll tell you, someone's starting to even get away.
Because I'm not going to give you that.
Nobody.
That's right.
I'm not going to do that.
When I was in, I'm going to drop here on the table for the wake-up calls. When I was in elementary school, the jail would give wake-up calls around there.
Would they, really?
He'd call the line before and tell, will you wake up?
Who would call?
Whoever was at the desk. And they used to serve the very best fried chicken. And when they did that, they invited the county commission to my husband's service. He loved going to jail to eat. That was bad, forty years ago.
Best fried chicken's at the jail.
Well, they used to be, I don't know anymore.
Okay, that's all I have.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, I guess that we're done.
Okay.
All right.